Good morning.
Thanks for being here this morning. I know that the evening work comes out of town. I have a lot of things that are going on. I'm ready to do that, of course, for a break. As we mentioned, as I mentioned in my update, we had TeamWorks here with us and worked more today on learning about our decision-making and community engagement. Those are two of the things that I think are pretty evident over the past couple of months, that there's a lot of confusion in the community about whose role is what, even some within our organization, about whose role is what. And so, we're going to do some learning about that today and also some looking forward to how we can engage with the public in a meaningful way that helps us move forward and that we come to together in it commonly, you know, so we can have a conversation around it. So Dennis and Christine, I don't know if you've met before, I will let you introduce yourselves, Christine, or you'll be working with us this morning, so I'll come do that.
Sure. Well, I'm Christine Robleski. I have been a consultant to the district before I joined TeamWorks, so some of you may have seen me around. I have been with TeamWorks for about three years. Prior to that, I did independent consulting and prior to that, I worked in St. Paul Public Schools on the executive team. I was their chief community relations officer a few years back now.
In 916.
And, yes, I was working with 916 as a consultant and then I carried over into my time at TeamWorks as well. So I've done a lot of work with school districts, not just St. Paul, but a number of school districts, urban, suburban, rural school districts, and with Dennis, have had the opportunity to work with a number of nonprofits and religious organizations as well. So the philosophy of TeamWorks, which I think most or all of you are familiar with, really merged nicely with my own philosophy about partnership and engagement. And so, when Dennis and I found ourselves working alongside each other and recommending each other to clients, we thought it would be a good idea if we just merged together in terms of the work that we're doing. So been able to contribute to TeamWorks and learn from TeamWorks as well. So it's fun to be able to be back here in Stillwater. I am technically a Stillwater parent, though we did open enrollment to South Wash, because we're one of those families that's closer to the schools in South Wash than here. If you had had the opportunity to purchase Valley, we probably would have stayed right with Stillwater. So it was a tough decision for our family, but we still support Stillwater Public Schools and, as some of you know, I think Mike and Kathy have seen me working alongside both of you for a couple of referendums, doing some volunteer work, so proud parent.
And again, Dennis, she's brought, what we've tried to outline is three sorts of movements here this morning. Christine's going to take the lead and take a look at an array or a spectrum of stakeholder engagements and a framework or way of looking at stakeholder engagement as a variety of tools and decisions that the board and the administration can make moving forward from a design, that you literally can't design to the specific situation. We're then going to shift and talk about how that merges and works really well within a macro decision-making process and talk about the roles, purposes, and how that impacts management versus governance in doing that work. And then, the third shift is to kind of say, is to take a look at, so let's take some real live examples that are going on and moving forward and how might, just how might as a way of application, so how might the district think about in application, given the district initiatives and changes that are part of your plan, that you will be moving forward over the next two to three years? And when we get done, we get done, right? So, any questions? So three movements? It's good to ask questions, a little bit of learning, a little bit of fun.
Okay. Great. So we'll get started. So we're going to kind of sandwich some work with all of you. So we're going to have you start off this morning by thinking about the stakeholders in the district and the ways in which you all have engaged stakeholders over the years, whether you're on the board, whether you're on the administrative team, you know, and Julie Goldsmith and I were the ones who did the focus groups related to the bold proposal. So we were able to kind of dig deeply into what your parents and your staff have said and are taking that into consideration as we move forward as well. So as you think about stakeholder engagement, I'm going to ask you to think stakeholders, not just public or community, because your stakeholders do include your staff at various levels and then they include your parents, and some people might consider parents internal or external stakeholders, depending on your position, and then you have the broader community and a number of partners that you work with. So giving you some insight into the way that we're going to approach this. But I want to get a sense from all of you on how you approach stakeholder engagement up to this point, because what we'd like to do is help you develop some plans that are really focused on the stakeholders that you need to concentrate on most. And you'll see that it's going to dovetail nicely with the decision-making model that we're going to delve into a little bit more deeply. So I have a number of questions on your agenda for you. And one of the biggest issues when we work with organizations is we see a lot of people within an organization, everyone is well-intended, everyone wants to engage with stakeholders, but perhaps they all define it a little bit differently. And as we know, if we have, you know, Mike defining it one way and Carissa defining it another and Dennis defining it another, we're going to end up with different ways of approaching and connecting with our stakeholders. So what we really want to be able to do is start with, how do you define stakeholder engagement? So what I'd like you to do, you should have sticky notes, and if you don't, we have more in the box, the 3M Post-its, and there should be markers on your table somewhere, and if not, again, we'll have more that can come around. What I want you to do is identify the different ways that you engage with stakeholders currently, not the way you would like to, because we know that there's probably other ways that you'd like to engage stakeholders. And there are a number of different levels, like I said. It could be staff, it could be parents, and it could be the broader community. So I'd like you to do an S if it's a staff, just put it up in the corner. Let me see if I can grab one of your markers. So you'll have your notepad. Just identify if it's an S, a P for parent, or C for community, and the ways that you currently engage with them. Are they, you know, a public forum, an open meeting? For board members, maybe it is a time during the board meeting for public comment. Is it an individual engagement, where you set up individuals with meetings, one-on-one? So what I want you to do is just take one kind of engagement per sheet, sorry, in the corner, whether it's a C, an S, or a P for parent, and then just name as many as you can, one by one by one, and then pile them up next to you, and we're going to sort them out up here on the wall when you're all done. So the different ways that you engage with stakeholders.
No.
And it can be over time. If you've been on the board a number of years, maybe you've done it a certain way, you don't do it anymore. One for each one. You really need your coffee.
Community people?
Yeah, I would consider that community. We might delve a little bit more deeply as we get into a few things as we start categorizing. You can put an L. You can add a new one. So Kathy just asked, what would we consider a legislator, so we're adding a new category in L.
I know. I know.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I put S for students.
You can do it.
You can do it, ST?
Oh, ST.
ST.
If you've exhausted your thoughts on engagement, go ahead and just put them up on the wall over here. It doesn't have to be any specific order.
Really?
Mm-hmm. For those of you who are lenient thinkers, we'll get there.
Sounds so messy.
There's no grid on the wall.
We'll clean it up a little as we go.
Love your iris.
Yeah. What's that? Good. Also, they are.
Hey Barb, can I borrow some of yours?
No.
Yeah, they're pretty fine.
Take care.
I threw away the wrong Post-it yesterday. That's what I had. I threw them all away.
Spawning directions.
If you've exhausted your thoughts on engagement, go ahead and just put them up on the wall over here. It doesn't have to be any specific order.
Really?
Mm-hmm. For those of you who are lenient thinkers, we'll get there.
Sounds so messy.
There's no grid on the wall.
We'll clean it up a little as we go.
Love your iris. Yeah. What's that? Good. Also, they are.
Hey Barb, can I borrow some of yours?
No.
Yeah, they're pretty fine.
Take care.
I watched you.
Lady May seems to be a little bit of an obsession.
Were they under that?
Sure.
They were attached to that.
That was on, where she was.
Yeah.
Actually, she was.
That's right.
That's right.
Background.
People keep going.
Was there a little?
I don't know.
I should really have.
I know.
Yeah, that was showing.
That's why we don't have to press it.
I scratched all of them.
Hopefully, there's a minute.
Scratch your notes.
Oh, good.
Those are marks?
That's a gift.
Yeah, exactly.
Isn't it a pride of your job?
No.
You're right in there.
Yeah, yeah.
A couple that were thirty-nine people at the.
Oh.
Oh, God.
Oh, he says.
Really?
It's an all-day thing that goes in there.
Because normally, I said, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
Wow.
Okay. That's a lot of color.
All right, and now we start sorting along. So who would like to help me sort? Kathy? Let's get two more volunteers. Come on in. And Carissa. So let's sort out by stakeholder group for now. So students, parents, staff, community, and other. I know there were a couple of others, okay? So let's go ahead and get started by sorting by stakeholder first. Student, and then? We capped out. There were a couple of students.
What was the second one?
Staff. And you picked the staff.
Okay, I'll do staff.
And Carrie. What did you take?
Oh, okay.
Are you on students?
I'll take care. Staff.
There's a lot of parents right here. I didn't want to get started right in the middle.
Then there's some that are, have everyone. Mm-hmm.
Very sexist.
No.
I'm here to do this.
I'm here to do this.
Characterize.
Grab the piece.
So we have a community piece right here.
So that's pretty.
Yeah.
There's some seeds for the.
Here.
Do you want to like, buy?
Do you like, do you like combinations, which stuff elsewhere is?
Yeah.
You're not very straight on that.
She had her.
C.
I have C.
Just for the.
I'll see that if they do.
And then there's another person that attempted to observe, and then there's another person, just tell me what it's over. Right?
Yeah.
I was just saying.
I was just saying.
I was just saying.
I was just saying.
So what is this?
People just use seeds by my.
Now the world, okay.
Now we can call them.
He's lucky to have.
Kathy, if you're super.
I did that especially for you, Kathy.
Everything else is real.
Carissa did those.
Those that are standing up, and those are the same.
Let me know what my.
Yes.
We have our.
Wow, this looks at everyone.
Yes.
How did that arrive?
By carrier.
Wonderful. Okay. Oh, the coffee has arrived.
Of course.
I have to just.
I can't do it.
It's just a little.
It's too much.
Okay.
It's just really bad.
Thank you, Rachel.
I'm being really quiet over here.
Okay. As you gather your coffee, and we continue to pick.
That wasn't just that much.
Let's observe what we have here. So you do have a number of ways that you engage with students, some ways here, right? This is your staff group. It's about equal with your community group, roughly speaking, and then this is your parent group. Now, some of these connect with all the groups, staff, parents, community, and I think legislators were even on some of these. We've added legislators over here. So I would like people who did not help sort on the first round, could I get four volunteers? Three, four. What I'd like you to do is go through the groups and take off any duplicates, but then put them here for me, just put them on the table for me. So go ahead, pick a group, take off any duplicates if you want to.
Okay, this is a really interesting personality.
Why did you say that?
Are you suggesting simple texts?
Complex linear texts.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Do you think the male side of the cockerels?
Just because I have a disability, doesn't mean you call it up.
Just take off duplicates.
Suddenly, this became either a very unsafe place or a really safe place. I'm not quite sure which one.
She was in vice. Her baby's hard.
Trying to focus here, but you already know how I struggle with that.
As long as it's not dancing or something.
Someone may have to go help Bob.
That's right.
Every presentation of meeting, they all.
Right over here. Do a report. For a second there, Barb, I thought it was me. Thanks for the coffee.
So Kathy just asked, what would we consider a legislator, so we're adding a new category in L.
I know. I know. It's pretty nice here.
They're older now, too. No, they keep finding younger children, so. So just put them on. They do. That's great. So what you, George, what are you doing for break?
Nothing. We're going to.
Why are you putting that cabinet now?
That's. Two harvests. That's the second, the sixth. Lars' month.
I would stay down, but I just. Yeah, yeah.
I would assume that's.
It'll be a pretty tiny year.
Yeah. Oh, that's helpful. Well, frankly.
Sixteen. If you think you've got the duplicates, maybe some of you are starting to resource.
Probably for four hours out of the four days.
And who's got a set high place?
We usually go into two members for breakfast or someplace.
My parents.
Yep, the kind of names. Crepes that they have in the pantry, so we go there for breakfast. I just want to go on record that I'm not the last one. After all that.
Bob, did you have the legislator section?
It depends. It's a movie, but it's all.
You what?
I've got a good book. Yeah. Yeah, with. Number four on New York.
I was going to say.
Right now. She said, well, maybe characters. She said, you got to read it. I thought, oh, I did this fair and Sunday.
Yeah, I tried in our strength as much as we can.
We're going to the cat, my question. But then I might need to find him his card. My card's about. It is really good. It is really good.
Okay. Gather your coffees. Continue to pick. Let's observe what we have here. So you do have a number of ways that you engage with students in some ways here, right? This is your staff group. It's about equal with your community group, roughly speaking. And then this is your parent group. Now, some of these connect with all the groups. Staff, parents, community, and I think legislators were even on some of these. We've added legislators over here. So, I would like people who did not help sort on the first round. Could I get four volunteers? Three, four. What I'd like you to do is go through the groups and take off any duplicates, but then put them here for me. Just put them on the table for me. So, go ahead, pick a group, take off any duplicates if you want to.
Okay, this is a really interesting personality.
Are you suggesting simple tasks?
Complex linear tasks.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Just because I have a disability doesn't need to call it up.
Just take off duplicates.
Suddenly this became either a very unsafe place or a really safe place. I'm not quite sure which one.
Trying to focus here, you already know how I struggle with that.
Someone may have to go help Bob. For a second there Barb, I thought it was me. Thanks for the coffee. So you're, there's four grad kids and they're going to state more. The youngest, she comes home tomorrow and then the oldest is started working.
Oh, okay, okay. Is she with you right now or she?
Yeah.
So what you George, what are you doing for break?
Nothing. We're going to.
Why are you bringing that cabinet now?
That's, no, two harvests. That's the second, the sixth.
I would stay down, but I just.
It'll be a pretty tiny area.
Oh, that's helpful.
If you think you've got the duplicates, maybe some of you are starting to resource.
Probably for four hours out of the four days. We usually go into two harvests for breakfast or someplace. Crepes that they have in that, so we go there for breakfast.
I just want to go on record that I'm not the last one. After all that.
Bob, did you have the legislator section?
You what?
Yeah, it was like number four on New York.
Yeah, I tried in our strength as much as we can. We're going to the cap, my question. But then I might need to find him his card. Right? I needed to get.
All right, for those of you who have not come up here to do any sorting yet, would you please stand? Ooh, yeah, love this.
Everyone's like, what? I still have to do something?
If you've already sorted up on the wall, you can sit down. If you have not sorted, remain standing, please. If you've sorted. So those, okay. So now the rest of you get to negotiate.
Oh, negotiations.
Come on up to the wall and look. So first of all, congratulations, you had a lot of duplicates up here, which means you're all thinking very similarly in terms of the way that you engage. So I have the duplicates and I'll take those for your report. What I want you to do, the rest of you, is come and start sorting these. Now, you can unsort the stakeholder groups again. And I want you to sort by the type of engagement. So where you see a category, and I'm sorry your name again. John has already started sorting staff. These are all meetings, he said. So he didn't, he said, so do meetings count as one type of engagement? And I said, just leave them up here. But we want, we're going to want to see the different types of meetings that are held here. So he's already started a category called meetings. And I'm going to give you some paper and we'll put meetings up here. We'll have you start identifying them by category. So, come on up, start grabbing these, looking through for where you see some connection and start to categorize them a little bit further.
So, this is meetings right here.
That little group there is meetings. And those in particular are staff meetings. If you want to.
No, we're mixing up.
Now you're mixing up groups again. Sort, unsort, resource. And remember, you can start working together. And I'm going to grab you some papers.
I'm starting to email down here. Talking to each other, that might be. No. Well, I only think it's interpreted very differently. Should a text be like an email?
You guys are doing a great job.
Everybody needs courage. Phone calls. Phone calls all the way down.
Yep, so it's on there.
Yeah, I was going to take, nothing to say about taking any hits either.
So Mike is going to start putting the titles together and start someone in the groups. And he's going to tape them up on the wall so that you can start categorizing.
Oh, so a little state vision. Does he, is he taking any time off? Scott and I have done that a couple times since Alex was in college and Ellen Michael's, unless he's not anymore. Even he is. I do like, I like taking that email off here because.
I'm just getting rich.
What we, what we have to do, actually. We, well, you saw, and we saw Red, one of the owners of Demarches, add Demarches. And then he was at Phil's last night. And I wanted to go up and like, really?
And I told him.
These are going right.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's the thing.
Three years ago, is Ellen Michael. Yes, that was Scott and I, Scott and Ellen Michael were in the front. And Emily and I were in the back. And that's, because Ellen Michael and Lily are both in concert car. So, and we love that movie. Even Alex would sing that if you were in a car. That soundtrack. Yes, and then I think, somebody I think liked it recently. Because that's like from, it's from last summer. That video, we took it last summer.
Based on what I can see.
Perfect.
I got a direct on the tour it is, so I can wear Jurassic.
Nine twenty.
There's a house, it's just. There's a house for sale.
In the paper, yes. Three hundred sixty-seven rooms. Are they all half million or are they less? I figured Keith's not good to do it. Well, that should be nice. From what he says about that golf course, he said.
Next summer?
Language was a high end public.
I'm just surprised. The town said it's going to be one of the housing. All right, now, if the rest of you will just kind of do the gallery walk, see what we have here. Kathy, can I ask you to help a little?
Oh, yes.
Was she your path or what?
I know she needs to organize. And if anyone wants to volunteer to help Kathy sort through the meetings a little bit more. So if there's implication or just group, like they see a few board meetings in there, group them together.
I should help, I've done jack all day.
But go ahead, start, start looking at, at the different ways that you engage with your stakeholders. And hopefully you've all had a chance to look at some of them since you've done some of the. We do have tape if you, some of them are sticking any longer.
It just means that they have good handwriting, so their post-its all got saved. How you doing Tom?
For the weekend, a lot of basketball.
Are you, the family doing anything over break?
Looking forward to joining the weekend with my family, gambling. Gambling destroys family. I'm very excited.
Nona won yesterday in the girls tournament. They play this afternoon.
Who do they play?
Today they play Becker.
That could be interesting.
They should be able to win that. They should be in the finals on Saturday.
Who's the number one to save D L for girls?
Well, in their class, one was Hutchinson, but they got beat.
Was that, was that Hutchinson game that, wasn't there a game that was an absolute?
I don't know that.
That would be great.
They could win the whole thing. Yeah.
Are they doubling?
I think they're three, they're in the second tier, second class. I saw, I saw an eighth grade girl yesterday. As the point guard for Becker. Probably the best ball handler.
I think ESPN highlights.
Did it really?
Yeah.
She was unbelievable in this game.
You should see it, she goes around this girl like she's standing still.
Yeah, and then she finishes with a little floater in the lane. She did it like three times.
He was one of my students in that.
All right, so then you all had a chance to go through the.
It's amazing to see those. Like how does that body fold out?
You can go ahead and sit down, we're going to talk about it a little bit. Okay. So some of these are self-explanatory and some I might ask for a bit of editorial license. So, you do surveys and you survey staff, parents, and students and community, right? So you get to all your stakeholders, you don't have legislators that you survey here. I have had one organization where they survey legislators, believe it or not. And most of the people who respond are legislative staff, not the legislators themselves, but it's just a side note. So, organized groups. So these are advisory committees, professional development, we have at-school events, which I'm going to put over here, because I saw an events group. Advisory groups, student groups, MSBA, large group forum. That line, please there. Large group forum, can someone tell me a little bit more about this, the author, author on this?
That was mine. It was, it would be like around a specific topic.
Okay.
Where we would have with community, green people. And so it'd be kind of a, maybe event, possibly.
Put it over here.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Visit classrooms to see what.
Our learning environments look like and receive feedback.
There we go. Focus groups, so that's organized groups. Student board members, student council, team conversations. I think we got a lot of advisory committees and advisory groups. So we have those types of different organized groups and connections, councils, groups, advisories. A lot of different kinds of meetings. My wife is a former teacher. Does that go over here? Private kind of stuff? Instead of a meeting? What do you think, George?
That's, that's where I hear a lot of crap.
Put that over there.
We'll edit that one out.
George, say that into the microphone.
A lot of rumors are spread at my wife's meetings.
A little harder on that one, George. Okay, so meetings include board meetings, recognition. We talked about this forum or large group, I'm going to put that kind of in the midpoint. PTA, PTO, is that a meeting? Is it an organized group?
Yeah.
Organized group? Let's see, informal conversations during classroom visits, committee work. Is that organized group or are we talking board committee? Okay, put that over here. Program meetings and events, collaborate with staff on tech planning and implementation through tech committees. Council. And administrative and teachers. We have principal meetings, staff meetings, department meetings. Before and after school meetings? Before and after meetings? What are those? Can someone?
That was my, like, when we have meetings, the before and the after, there's always.
Oh, the meetings outside the meetings?
Well, before the meeting and after.
After the meeting, okay. In-person meetings, is that one-on-one? Yeah? Team meetings, we have a lot of before and after. There's a whole group here, I don't know if I can go to these. Meeting requests, individual meetings, department meetings, grade level meetings. Before and after, before and after. Administrative team meetings. Site leadership team, staff. Minutes and agendas, individual, a lot of individual over here. So, within your meeting category, you could categorize a little further if you wanted to. Events may include some of these forums. School and district events and activities at school. We have welcome nights, we have tours, we have liaisons. And interviews. This is kind of on its own, would you say?
Yeah, we didn't over put that.
I'm going to put that over here because I think I might take a little editorial license. So you have different events. Then you have electronic under here, you have your news columns, your newsletter, publications, which used to not be electronic, for those of you who've been around as long as I have. Email, email response, texting, mail, web streaming, social media, website, Facebook. And I see one missing here, I'm going to ask Chris to write it down. Isn't it your mass notification system? Right? That's, is that up here? Is it?
I think it's under phone.
It's under phone? Why don't we just put that on there just in case? Because we lost it. School messenger.
So you mentioned you have publications there under electronic. So we're just going to say that would be newspaper too, even in print?
News columns.
Even though they're not electronic?
The one says newsletter and printed communications, if I remember correctly.
News columns.
The other green one to the left.
Newsletter, printed communications, there you go. So the things that email. Say again?
To change our electronic, we want to add and print.
Social communication.
Electronic and print. Okay, now we have here private life. And it includes walkthrough for realtors, community leaders, coffees, public spaces like Cub, because you can't get through the grocery store without talking to someone. Neighbors, social gatherings, my wife is a former teacher. Social gatherings, church, Rotary. And then I put interviews here. Now I know this says private life. What I'm going to do here, if you're okay with it, is I'm going to put one-to-one. And I'm going to do public-private. Okay? So those are, that's kind of your personal network in some cases. So that's kind of your personal network in some cases, but some of it is just one-to-one. Right? So I see, we'll put interviews here. So some aren't based on your private life, some are based on your position in the district where you're agreeing to have one-on-one meetings, whether you're a board member or an administrator. But some are at parties. Sometimes people will catch you at church or after church, before and after church. So we're just going to change that to one-to-one, public-private, okay? Because that's where people really get you. Listening sessions. Then you have legislative pre-sessions, legislative letters, capital visits, platform sharing. You have your phone calls. Should we put that under electronic or is that a separate category?
Well, I think there's different, yeah, it's probably a separate category because generally speaking, electronic communications are only one-way. Whereas when we're talking about phone conversations, it's people are contacting us and we're having much more two-way than one-way.
Okay, so mass notification. Can I move this whole category? Here? And I'm going to put the phone under there. But you'll see how, as you connect with people, sometimes it's the way you do it, but these are really about those one-to-one interactions, whether it's by phone or in person. And then you have your public hearings, which is sort of like another kind of meeting, and I'm going to leave that there. So now we've categorized the different ways that you currently do your engagement. And again, under meetings, you have a lot of different types of meetings, right? From board meetings to staff meetings to, let's see, you've had some student meetings, I think, in here too. And maybe some parent meetings. PTO is under advisory. And then you have a number of advisory groups, which would be interesting to see. So that was a little exercise to say, how do you do things now? What I'd love to do is have a little conversation right now about, especially for board members, how do you define engagement? What do you think is important in terms of engaging with different stakeholders? If you can just share.
Listening to them.
Listening, okay.
Two-way.
Two-way? What's important about engaging with your stakeholders?
It helps us build a frame of reference for who we're representing.
Okay, frame of reference.
Ownership.
Okay, so connection with your constituents?
Just, I think, allowing a space for them to be heard, not necessarily offering any kind of, and most, most likely not offering any kind of solution or, you know, kind of influence, so to speak, but more just allowing them to, you know, speak their truth and be heard.
So a lot of what I'm hearing so far for the purpose of engagement is connecting with your constituents, listening to your constituents, you know, having conversations.
Well, I think it's, yeah, I think it's listening up to when you make a decision. And then it becomes when they want an explanation of why you made the decision that you did, explaining why you made the decision that you did. So I think it's listening up to make your decision. And then you have to explain to those people and say, why did you vote this way or that way?
Okay, so listening for input on decision-making.
Up front.
Okay. Other, your purpose for engaging with your different stakeholders? Is it always connected to a decision?
No, but recently.
I understand. I'll ask you to go before that recent decision. Think before.
I think as, as I was a new member and learning myself, then it was taking some of what I was learning and trying to help the community understand the board role.
Ah-ha, so educating the community. Okay, there's a...
I find that's very difficult to say now without something patronizing.
Oh, okay. Right.
Because the reaction to that is not very, it's not openness.
So we'll say communicating to and informing the community and your constituents about what's happening. Is that a better way to put it?
Yeah.
Okay. Mike, Tom, do you have a purpose of engaging stakeholders?
I think another reason for me is to let people know that I am, or so that they know how to communicate with me and who I am and sometimes what a name or face, that kind of stuff.
So sharing yourself with them so that they know how to connect with you as a representative?
Yep.
Okay. Mike?
I think it's pretty inclusive.
I'm sorry.
I think it's a pretty inclusive list.
What can I say, Steve?
I think too, for me, it's a lot of information gathering. And I think we mentioned that a little bit before, but to understand where all our stakeholders are coming from and what's important to them, what they value. And also in the schools and what's happening, we're just gaining more information so we can make more decisions.
Okay, so just as a board member, any other thoughts?
Well, just building on what Amy said, I think, yeah, that education piece. Because I think there is, in my experience, a lot of people who do think that we have the power as an individual to do something about an issue. And just helping to gain clarity. And I think I was even sharing with Denise, you know, when I started as a parent, that was kind of how I was taught to engage. You just go to a board member if you have an issue about class size or whatever, that that's just kind of what you do. And that's kind of how I, as a community member, as a new parent in the district, had been taught by other parents. And so I think it's kind of that education piece.
And I guess I'd just like to throw out, one of the topics that I hope we touch on today is the whole role of a school liaison. Prior to the last couple of months, this, we've, we created that relationship by assigning board members to schools. And I think the goal was just to build relationships, particularly at the elementary. They see their own school community, but we thought it was really important to help people understand like the broader district and to know people. And so I think that there's, one way we thought of dealing with that was to have the school liaison roles and assignments. But I'm not sure that that's really working, and I hope that we can talk about that today.
Well, and that leads into, so you all have individual engagement that you do, and then you have your collective engagement. So I'm going to start kind of veering us into now that we've had that opportunity to talk about purpose from board members especially, kind of what is it that you like about engaging with communities? The liaison role has changed, right? From initially it was about developing the relationships, I think, with some of you. So informing, getting to know people, having people getting to know you, to are there specific parameters about the role of a school liaison as a board member? And I have worked with other boards so that we can say, you really want to satisfy the desires and talents and strengths of board members and those of you who are on the administrative team as well, to be able to leverage those strengths to connect with stakeholders, right? So you know, there's kind of multiple layers here as you look at this. So we want to start with collectively as a district. Now I'm going to go above the board and the administrative team because even though there are members of your community that can separate board and administration, you really are all district. And by and large, the vast majority of your community, your staff, everyone understands the board is the district, the administration is the district. Sometimes people will try to pluck you out of that role, but together you represent the district. And you're all have the district's interests at heart, which is what makes decisions so difficult sometimes. And board members are sometimes elected on a platform to represent a certain constituency. We've seen this in particular in other communities where they say, I am going to represent the American Indian community, right? That's, that's what I was chosen for. And once you get on the board, you understand you're fiscally responsible for all the kids and representing all your community members. So when we think about engagement, and I will be working with your administrative team a little bit, I think into the future, on what does engagement look like holistically at the district level? So something like a decision-making process that Dennis is going to take you through would be a district-level engagement. Within that, what are the roles of board members? What is the role of the superintendent? What are the roles of administrators within that specific type of engagement? Beyond that, with board members, if you'd like to say, we really want to define what engagement looks like for us. Of course, we're going to participate, we're going to understand, hopefully agree with the framework that we're going to move forward with for district-wide engagement, and we will have a role in that. But as board members, we want to get beyond that. We want to have a collective way that we agree on that we're going to engage with our constituents, because we've seen this happen. And then a layer under that is individually, as we connect with MSBA, as we do a school liaison role, as we have different pieces of the work that we're going to do one-on-one, what does that look like and what are the guidelines around that? So as new board members come on, you're onboarding them, you're orienting them to here is the way that we do engagement in Stillwater area public schools. Does that make any sense? Okay, so I am going to pull up, it's in your packet as well. If you go to the second page of your packet, I'm going to introduce you to the International Association of Public Participation Framework. On page two of your packet. I was introduced to this framework lovely, you can see this, it's in your packet. The International Association of Public Participation is a worldwide organization. So it's worked in different languages, different communities, different continents. And what it does is it offers a way for you to look at public participation, I would call it stakeholder engagement, along a spectrum, like you do a lot with a lot of things in education. And it really resonated with me when I was the chief community relations officer for St. Paul Public Schools. At that time, I was able to have a team actually do research on different engagement models and what might work in an education system. We landed on this one because it resonated well with us. You could be certified, so we were able to get a cross-departmental team of people and even some folks, Chris, you were not on the team at the time. We invited other school district folks to join us in our learning. And so we had teams from HR, from outreach, from our English language learner department, from our communications, all of them came together to learn this process and be certified. Because we found that we were duplicating efforts, we were running into each other, we were defining engagement differently. Our board of education at the time didn't have to take action to approve it, but they ended up giving us a nod of approval anyway. We presented the engagement model process to them. They said this is great. We want to have our own engagement process that we agree to as a board. And so we worked through that with them as well. So the exercise that you're doing here is something similar, not the same, to what we did for them, to help them start identifying how do we want to engage our communities? And that's what we're trying to do with you here, your stakeholders. So what's appealing about this is as you think of engaging your different stakeholders, everything from informing, which is that one-way out communication, is part of that spectrum of engagement with your stakeholders. A lot of times people talk about, we need to empower our staff, we need to empower our students and decision-makers in the school district. You are the ones, short of allowing people to make the decision through ballot measures, you are the decision-makers. Unless you are willing to give up your authority and say, community, you decide. So a referendum, elections to decide on board members. Those are the only times that your stakeholders are decision-makers. And you are giving them that authority by putting that measure on the ballot. And so again, it's that whole spectrum from informing. And I know some people say, well, sending out information is not engaging people. But it is. How often do you hear in your organization and others, we're simply not communicating well? We don't get enough information. We don't get the right information. So informed, and some of those are out there, your phone calls, your hearings. We heard a couple of your board members say, we really want to inform and educate people on what's happening. We have newsletters, that's one way. Mind the trip. And then the next level up, and you've heard about, you've known teamwork for a while, gets to consulting with them. Focus groups, surveys, you have them, you do consult with your stakeholders already. And even some of those public meetings. So as you move up the spectrum, you'll see, then you start working with them to ensure that they're understood. So workshops, we talk about deliberative polling. Some of those meetings that you have up there, the forums, some of the focus groups might even be considered going into that involved category. And then again, the level before empowering, the level before you give them decision-making power, is collaborative. From my perspective at teamwork, so before that in St. Paul Public Schools, and a consultant that wasn't doing teamwork's process, collaborate and that partnership approach that we talked about at teamwork are very close together. The decision-making process that Dennis is going to talk you through, it's very nicely here. Because we're talking about, even though the decision-making framework that we'll talk you through is not consensus-building, actually different. It is involving people in the decision. If you look where I put the arrow, going to look to you for advice and innovation in formulaic solutions, incorporate the advice into the decisions to the maximum extent possible. Not giving up the authority for making the decision, but incorporating their input and their advice into the decision. The other interesting thing, so we give a couple of example techniques and you can see the promise to the public along the way. So you talk about the goal as an organization. When we think about the International Association of Public Participation here. As an organization, generally speaking, you would say, we in Stillwater area public schools are going to pick one of these as our general goal. So maybe it's consult or involve. So most of the time, when we work with our stakeholders, we are going to choose to consult and involve, we're going to be at one of these two levels. When you encounter a specific initiative or a decision-making process, you may say, okay, now is the time, when we look at this framework and we say, we're going to choose a specific level on this spectrum. We're going for a referendum, we're going to empower you. What does that look like? What are the decisions we need to make? When does it happen? When we're going to make a decision about boundary changes, right? That's coming up. We may choose to say, it's important we want to collaborate in our community. So this gives you a way to say, by and large, we're going to choose to be informed. You may have, we've encountered organizations that are very authoritarian if people like it that way, right? Just give me the information I need, I'll do my job, I don't really want to engage in meetings. I trust you, let's not do a lot of these other things. And forum might be just fine for some organizations. Most organizations will choose consult or involve as their general means of communicating. And then again, you jump up to collaborate and empower as the situation warrants. The other, to my mind, beautiful thing about IAP2 is they have a whole toolkit that gives you different methods that you can use depending on what it is that you're seeking to do with your stakeholder groups. Surveys, focus groups, meetings, charrettes, social media, listening sessions. The World Cafe, I think you've used that in here. So there's a lot of different ways that you can choose to engage with your stakeholders. And that toolkit, I think Chris has seen me pull that out a few times, is really helpful to be able to say, what is it that we want to do with our stakeholder groups depending on the situation in order to really connect and communicate with them, depending on what our purpose is? So as board, what is our purpose for engaging our community generally? What is our purpose for engaging with our stakeholders on a specific issue? So I'm going to ask you to always think about purpose as you engage with your stakeholders. As we think through maybe an overall plan for engaging with and building, continuing to build relationships with your stakeholders, what is it that we want to have happen throughout the year, regardless of any decision-making? Because we've heard this, again, I'm sure you've heard this from your stakeholders. They only come to us when they want us to support a referendum. Whether or not it's true, we've heard this from a number of school districts. So we know there are districts out there that say, we don't want that to be the case. We want to stay connected with our community because we want them to be informed, we want them to be involved. Heck, we want them to talk well about our school district so that they enroll their kids and choose us first. And your parent networks are the best way to keep kids in your school system. That is the number one way, that word-of-mouth communication. You can find a way to say, what is that word-of-mouth communication? From the one-to-one interactions to the experience that the kids are having in the schools and that your parents are talking about, and of course, your staff are talking about. If you can really connect with those parents and get them to talk about your district as a place where we want to keep our kids, you're going to be golden. So again, you'll see, we started with, how do you define the ways that you engage currently? And we started to sort them out. You do some of that work. What has not been clear to me is what has been your purpose as an administrative team, as a board, together? If you can say, here is our purpose for engaging our stakeholders generally. Here is our purpose as a board. Here is our purpose as we move forward with a decision, you can bring some of that clarity forward to your various stakeholders as well. And if you adopt a model, and it doesn't have to be this, it can be an adaptation of this model, but just, this is the way we're going to do things. We're going to develop our board and our teams, not just our administrative team, all of our principals, our staff and teacher leaders, our parent and teacher leaders to be able to use this model. It's going to start to be embedded so that you're not switching. With each decision, one of the board changes over, one of the principal changes over. The idea is not to have all the processes change. It's to have that developed throughout your district and your community as best you can, to say, this is the way we're going to approach it. So they're asking questions like, what's the purpose about the engagement? Who are the decision-makers and choice makers? What's my goal?
Christine, I'd like some clarification. Under empower, it says to place the final decision-making in the hands of the public. And this is just my point of view. In the recent bold decision, I felt that some of the community members felt that the decision should have been made based on their opinion. And they were, you know, they did not want us to, to... It was the anti-bold group, and they expected, because I'm against this, as a board member, I expect you to vote in that manner. But the two things that, that I wrestled with was, as board members, and I guess from my point of... I've been here 10 years, so I've got a lot of history and background that the public, who just recently got involved, did not have. So I had that in my head. And then I also had in my head people in the community on my, that I interact with who understood the importance of it. So it was like, people, when I would hear from people, like the anti-people, they'd say, vote no. And they expected me to vote no. But I also had people who said, this is really difficult, but I understand for the greater good of the community that this needs to be done. So I guess it's, as a board member, there's that balance of, to what extent do you make a decision based on what you're hearing from community members versus your knowledge and looking at it from a broader perspective for the overall good of the district? So that's been a, a challenge for me.
Yeah, what I would, what I'd offer for you is, and we've, we've had this discussion. As board members, you're elected by the, and you're elected by state law to represent the whole district. And we've talked about in the past that you have to remain independent in your thought and action. You have to understand individual self-interest and then always act in district interest. Okay? So you need to...
Well, I, I think that would be worthy of checking with all the board members right now to see if they view it like you just said.
And so, and I'll just, just a couple of the comments. So number one is, the, the board is a governing body, not a managing body. So therefore, you understand all, you seek to understand interest. Then you step back and go, not what's in the interest of subgroups, what's the interest of the district? And as you probably, you've experienced, and just it's like a no-brainer, across the district as large as yours, there is no community voice. There will always be differences of interest and opinion. So the board has to be independent in thought and action to be able to look across that, what's the district interest? If, if you as individuals come to represent not the district but subgroups, you're actually not fulfilling your role. So what is typical in, in most settings is if that is the case as a board member, let's say I'm a board member and I can't represent district interest, then I can choose to recuse myself from voting because I can't represent district interest. I can only represent a sub-interest. So I'm not fulfilling my role. That's what sometimes some board members choose to do. And I think as a board, again, your role is always understand the variety of interest. And this is a good way of choosing the, how the goal and the, and the, and how you pull it into decision-making model is to make sure you understand clearly district interest. Then you step back and go, we understand all the self-interest, but what's the district interest? What is the district interest? And that's both the challenge and the joy of governing. Because most individual groups, their role is not district interest.